We changed the hours this year. Rather than starting at 11, we'll be starting at noon and it'll run till 5:00 P.M. It's the same location as last year, which was Livingston Field. That seemed to really work well for us. We will have, the event will also include numerous food vendors, crafters, entertainment rides, games, similar to last year. Some rides will be free like they were last year and some will require minimum cost. So there won't be any confusion this year because I know there's a little bit of confusion. We will have signs noting which are free and which are paid so that parents will know in advance rather than wait in the long line and get up there and the child has no money. So we want to avoid any sort of issues. We are in discussions with Don Callahan. As you know, T.J. Callahan's had the one-day liquor license last year and we've invited them back again this year to be a part of it and do the same thing that they did last year. So we're talking to Don because there'll be some, you know, structure again as far as like the boundaries of where people can take the alcohol versus the rest of the field.
Just before we move on, just a general question to the chairman. Is there any kind of bid requirement that we need to be cautious of in this instance?
Yeah.
Thank you.
For people that want to be a vendor, a list will be going out to all the vendors that we had last year and additional ones that have contacted me since last year's event. They got wind of it and they heard it was a success and they want to be a part of it. So the list is growing. So for those in Tewksbury that want to be a part or if you're, you know, somebody that's not from Tewksbury, we're accepting all vendors. So they can contact me at tpec2014@gmail.com. Other vendors and crafters will have adequate space again this year. However, this time, rather than when the vendor showed up, we had first come, first served basis. We don't plan to do that. What we're going to do is a numbering system this year. So we'll mark the spots the day before and then we'll assign each vendor prior to arriving a number. When they get their packets, they'll have a number. Well, they won't get it with the packets, so get it after the fact, you know, once we have everything, all our ducks in a row. The reason for this numbering system is so that rather than have everybody show up like they did last year, all at the same time, we had a long line, lots of vehicles trying to get onto the field. We want to avoid that chaos this year. Even though it was sort of organized as best as we could for our first time out, we want to make sure that we don't have 15 vehicles on the field all at the same time. So when they get the numbering system, we'll allow them by number to go, set out so many at a time, and then we think that'll work best. It'll keep traffic down and it'll keep things a lot simpler and a lot more small. Additions. This year, we want a visible information booth at the entrance of the field. This information booth will include a lost and found area, medical assistance, mapping for the event layout, showtimes, and other pertinent information that is still being worked out. Obviously, we don't have all the scheduling and stuff like that, but we plan to have that as time goes on. Once, I would say by the end of August, we should have a full schedule in order. That's our goal, anyway. We plan this year, one of our lessons learned was that we heard from a lot of residents that they wish they had seating to sit down. Once they got their food, they had to walk around with their food and they couldn't sit down and really enjoy it. So we're going to have a tented area with lots of seating and tables so that parents and families and everyone can just grab their food and take it back and enjoy their food, watch some entertainment, because we're going to strategically have the tent placed so that when they are there, when they're sitting down at any particular time, any form of entertainment that is going on at that time, they'll be able to sit and see it from there while they're eating. Or if they just want to take a rest, you know, it's a big field, a lot will be going on that day. One of the main things this year that we really need to get a better handle on too is porta potties. That was really a big flaw last year and, you know, well noted. So we want to make sure that we have adequate porta potties, trash and recycle receptacles, and we'll have them strategically placed throughout the field so that someone doesn't have to be on one side of the field and have to run across the other field, especially if you have a three-year-old that's just potty trained. That's what we heard. A lot of parents were saying it was difficult. So we hear you. So parking and traffic. Slavon Gay spoke with Chief Riggs at the Tewksbury State Hospital, and he has graciously offered the use of their parking lots again for this event. We used them for the holiday event last December and that was a big success. We had shuttle service along with, from the Tewksbury Transit, and so we had a shuttle bus going to and from the library to the, to the parking lot at the state hospital. And parents were thrilled. Nobody had to fight for a parking space. It just worked out really well. And so we thought that that was a great idea since Livingston is in close proximity again to the state hospital. We decided to go with that. So this year, I spoke with Andy from Tewksbury Transit and we're going to get two buses so that they'll be on a loop. So every, one will be dropping off, one will be picking up. So we'll have a continuous loop. Now, we did put together a wayfinding mapping system, so you'll notice that is behind. It's the second-to-last page. So this is a work in progress, but if you look at how we mapped it out, we sort of have the route going around and you can see where it will be going around the whole area. So one bus, you can see where the buses are. And we'll have lots of signage, parking at the, at the hospital. So I think that it'll, it'll help to be able to utilize this the day of the event. And we're going to post this. We want to make sure that people know, even the vendors. We have, signs will be posted for parking at the bus, parking and bus stops at the state hospital and Livingston Field. The mapping, this mapping, once it's in place, once it's 100%, this is still in direct form, but we just wanted to show you what we're coming up with so that, we want to make sure that we can actually cut down on all kinds of traffic. We, we just don't want the chaos that we had last year with people not knowing where to go on Livingston since there was really not too much, you know, parking there and to, for people to have to find other areas. It was sort of a nightmare, if you will. So to avoid that, we're working with Officer Jenny Welsh also to, to make sure that we have everything in good order.
So let me just ask a question before we move on. Is the blue loop the actual bus route?
Yes.
So it raises a couple of things. Safety Officer Welsh might be ahead of us on this and that's great. I trust she probably is, but just some comments. If Livingston Street is going to be closed to regular through traffic and if we're encouraging the bus loop on Route 38, which is a state road, I think we need to get DOT permission to do something like that. So you ought to make sure you talk to her about that. Obviously, we have a fellow selectman here who can give some guidance on that subject. But when we have any kind of event that interrupts the flow on a state roadway, state approval is required. Road races, parades, anything like that. I don't know if this particular event and a bus route would rise to that same level, but you don't want to find out the morning of the event. You want to know that as soon as you can. Because I also think from history that it takes a little while to get the state's blessing and things like that. So that's something you ought to concern, consider discussing with Officer Welsh, in my opinion, and if you need to take those steps, you'll have ample time to do so.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, this would be the, the bus route for the event. We're not saying we're closing the Livingston, but it would be best if we could redirect traffic around so that you didn't have a heavy, heavy traffic flow down there. Obviously, people have to get to their homes and emergency vehicles and whatever, you know. Vendors will be coming in, the committee, volunteers. So we want them to have local, localized parking available to them. So what we plan to do is in the upper field across from, is that a baseball field?
Girl softball.
Girl softball? Okay. So across from there, we'll have the vendors go up there. The other side, the field that enters, that's across the street from the rec center, we want to utilize that for handicap parking. That will be the majority of the parking there and some vendor overflow if needed. And then the rec center and behind the playground, vendors can also park there. Just because it's a matter of convenience for them and we want to make sure that we have plenty of handicap parking too. And that's the best spot for the handicap parking because all they have to do is walk through the field right there. They're already there. There's no hills involved or anything like that.
That's great. Do you intend to use the wind school as well for parking?
That would be great if we could, that in case, you know, there's an overflow, we would do that. If that's the case, we'd have to figure out what the bus, the bus route would do because that's sort of off the beaten path. But is it, my understanding, they can come through the field or something?
It's an easy walk.
It's an easy walk? Okay. So what we could do is put signs telling them to walk through the field. And then we'd have to have somebody, volunteers for parking, for crossing across the street so that nobody, you know, with the cars.
And on that same vein, I'd encourage you to reach out to the school department for a blessing to utilize that property for parking.
You need approval.
Yeah.
We also plan to have lots of signage throughout the town and we want to have them in the main areas such as East Street, you know, Main Street, event parking so that people know where to go. That way they can just sort of direct them before they end up on Livingston Street. So if we can reroute people to the specific parking areas, that would probably work out a whole lot better. So they're not getting aggravated right from the start, you know, with trying to find, go down Livingston and not be able to park. So if we have signage and then, how we'll do it is so that people will go around and not end up on Livingston. So we'll just have sort of, you know, big, big signs with, you know, arrows pointing to event parking. We want to eliminate a lot of stress for everyone, not only for attendees but ourselves. So, you know, we just want to make everybody comfortable and attend and have a great time. The mapping, this will be available on our website once it's in full form, not draft form, and other forms of communication. And like I said, vendors will also get us, get a copy of it. So one of the areas that is very important and critical to the success of this event is volunteers. We need many volunteers throughout the day and we're, we're really asking people in the community to please step up and contact us to be a part of this event, even if you can only give an hour that day. One of the major areas of volunteers we need is people that are in the 18-plus category because they can help with the parking situation, you know, directing people. Anyone under the age of 18, we can't allow that. It's a safety hazard. So we really ask, are asking the community to please step up and help us out. We can do various shifts, as I said, you know, if somebody can only give an hour or if somebody can give the whole day, whatever you can give, we would like. That would be a tremendous help to us. We're also seeking teen volunteers for service hours. If they want community service hours, we'll give, you know, they'll get as many hours or the day that they need for their, you know, for college applications and such. We need them for the arts and crafts areas, for games with the younger children, and just helping throughout the event, you know, making sure different things are flowing okay. So like I said, we really need volunteers and we're asking the public to please help us out. Again, they can contact me at tpec2014@gmail.com. And if you know somebody else on the committee, please feel free to contact them as well. You don't necessarily have to contact me directly, but you can even, Janine from Town Hall also takes calls for us for this event and she'll fill them and she'll send them over to me. So whatever you can do, we would appreciate. And that's all we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I turn to my colleagues for any comments or questions, let me first afford our guests to your left and right any opportunity to add anything to the presentation. At least give you a chance to get on TV and make a lot of noise. Okay. I don't see any takers, so let me, let me ask it to my colleagues to my left, where Mr. Gay.
I better say something.
Yeah, you probably should.
I made a lot of trouble. This committee has worked very hard and the last event was more than successful. It was estimated we had about 1,000 people in that area last year. And the key area that Madam Shearland said is a huge area. We were looking for volunteers. I know that Mr. Montwirth and Mr. Kravman helped last year. Mr. Penali, the Congressional Church has weighed in that they want to be part of the organization. So hopefully amongst us and people can get as many volunteers as they can. That area was an area that we had a lot of issues with as far as parking goes. We've eliminated a lot of that, hopefully a lot of that problem with, with busing and bringing, bringing people up to the Tewksbury Hospital. It was so congested by the recreation center that they had to call people that were off duty that day to help us with the parking. And I turned my left to Mr. Montori, was tremendous help in untangling a lot of our problems that we had the other day, which we addressed through here. So thank you very much, Mr. Montori, for listening to us and addressing a lot of what we have. And Shearland, Officer Jenny Welsh, Safety Officer, she was tremendous help in guiding us where we should go and what we should do to make sure things run smoothly and she's on board with us this year. And we've had new members of the committee that have helped. Moira was gracious enough to help with drawing up a lot of these drawings and we've all met to talk about all the areas that were, as far as parking and alleviating that. And as Shearland also said, I talked to Chief Riggs this morning and he was more than happy to have parking up at the Tewksbury Hospital, which great, excellent for the Christmas event. So that should make a, a big difference here and he has welcomed any of our input as far as how the mapping's going to go and where the bus is going to have the route. So he'll take a look at that. But they were so very accommodating and they were huge in making everything work well. So I'm, I'm hopeful that everything's going to go well again this year and I think we're going to have a large crowd. We've been contacted by quite a few vendors that were in last year's event that want to be in it, plus quite a few people that expressed interest of new people being this event again this year. So it's a great community event and hopefully everything will go off fine and we'll have another, another huge event. So I'm proud to be in this committee and I think they did a wonderful job. That's it for me.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Just a suggestion on the volunteers. There's an app on a website called Sign Up Genius that works very well for setting up sort of, you know, different.
Yeah. We are, we're on.
And then a separate question as to whether on this bus route, will you allow people, for instance, that may live nearby on 38 to walk to a spot to get on the bus? Or is it simply go to a parking lot and then get on the bus at that site?
No, if they live in walking distance to the area and it's safe for them to walk, absolutely, they can do so either to the field or to a location where there's a bus stop.
Yeah, well, that was my question. So if it is going up and down 38 and, you know, it's, it's at the.
Oh, you mean catch it from Main Street?
And jump on the, I don't know if that's been considered and that might also really bring in the question that the chairman raised about DOT approval, but just another thought.
Okay. So if that is, if that's an option to be able to do that, I'll address that with Officer Welsh because I think that we want to make sure that we cover all the safety precautions and again, the legal.
I'm not sure it's a good idea. It just came to my mind. Sorry.
That's a good idea to do.
Think about it. We were expecting 300 to 500, we were banking for 300 to 500 people last year and got 3,000 plus. But you're right, if, if they can park somewhere along Main Street and walk to a spot and catch the shuttle because they know the shelves, then you, then you release the, the traffic from the Livingston area.
And as I said, the thing that comes to mind, of course, is that the folks at John Ryan's Pub or Auburn Hardware there might not be too pleased if all of their parking is taken up by the Harvest Festival and people catch the bus there.
What if people come there and then they decide they want to have something to eat at John Ryan's Pub? They may change their mind too.
So. Again, just because it came out of my head doesn't mean it's a good idea. Trust me, my, my wife tells me that all the time.
Right. That's a good point and we'll address that. So yeah, I think so. If I could make another comment, though. If there are, as, as Mr. Gay said, there are various organizations in town and as, as he said, the Congressional Church contacted me today. So they'll be attending our meeting, which is set for next Tuesday, June 30th, at 7:00 at the Tewksbury Police Station Community Room. So if other organizations would like to be a part of it as well, then, you know, we would, we would encourage them to show up and, and find out, contact me, just, you know, to find out if they want to be a part of it. And, and, because we're not, we don't want to turn anyone away. It's a great opportunity and we thank you all for allowing us to do this for the community. We really appreciate it. It's very rewarding for all of us. So thank you.
I got a, I got a couple of questions or comments also. The vendors, is there any cost to the vendors to, either?
There, yeah, there's a cost to the vendors. As a matter of fact, a couple of the vendors, the, in the back page, the very back page, you'll notice, this is just what our new flyer will look like. It doesn't mean, this is, we just took what was there from last year, just sort of as, as a placement holder. But you'll see that Dean's Concessions, which they, they are definitely going to be a part of it this year, we get, we get a kickback of about 25 or 30%.
That's not a good word, too.
Okay. What should I say? We get.
Donation.
Bill, scratch that.
Once again, you're posting that out there to say, you know, once, once again, when you're talking to these vendors. The other thing is, I see, you know, you got the route approval of where you're going to be going. As getting permits for the MassDOT, I can speak, that we get them very quickly in the town of Tewksbury. So I'm confident that if you apply to put signs out on the highway, it'll move. We do it for the Memorial Day Parade with the Patriotic Committee. And they submit an application with a route approval of what you need to do. Unless you're closing the road, there is no real objection, but we get applications for road races and those type of things. And all you have to do is pretty much submit an application, there's no fee, and you just, this is the type of signs. But I do see you have signs, let's say, from 93. Do you plan on putting signs out on I-93 directly?
No, 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 no.
But if it's just signs on Route 38 and you plan on placing something on the sidewalks, things like that, I, once again, it's, that's fairly easy, you know?
Right. And no, not on 93, but we were thinking up by East Street when people get off the highway. So all Tewksbury roads, not anything outside of Tewksbury, Main Street from the Wilmington side, from the Lowell side, just so people know. And then, and then the actual routes, you know, just sort of directing people all around but with signage and very visible signage. As you can see, we lucked out getting a graphic artist on our committee with Moira Gray, who has been instrumental in putting all this stuff together, so.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. Let me kick it back to you, Jim.
I was kidding. If I have an idea right there, it's got to come out. Have you thought about maybe a, a subcommittee for, for the festival? I know there are a couple of people that I talked to that didn't necessarily wanted to join the events committee for everything you're doing through the year, but they had a passion around this, this event and wanted to help out. Have you thought about maybe having a, a subcommittee for the Harvest Festival that you can delegate some things to for people that just want to be involved in this, this event?
Well, wouldn't that fall into volunteers? They could volunteer for anything that they, they wish to do. If, we, we opened the meeting, it's a public meeting, so we would love for people to show up and, you know, if they have ideas, suggestions, we would really appreciate that.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll just look.
I mean, I, I don't know, but, you know, I would, I guess I would volunteer volunteers, but I'm not really sure. So if you know these, you know, the people that want to come, please ask them to show up then and we would, we would love to utilize their, their offers.
And then the, I know the cornhole tournament, I got the email from Spinelli today. He sent out the, the note to everybody on Facebook about this to hold the date. That's a big fundraiser for the cheerleaders, which is a great thing. I think they made $1,500 last year for, for the cheerleading, which is, which is fantastic. Are you having any other new, or something besides like the cornhole tournament, something new, you know, a tournament or fundraiser or something like that?
We're still in the working mode as far as that goes. We're still addressing new, new things that we want to do. If anyone has a suggestion, we're open to ideas. We, we do want to shake it up a little bit with new things because we don't want people to get bored by the same things all the time. But we do want to bring back a lot of the things that were a highlight to others too. So if you have any ideas, suggestions, please, you know, let us know.
And then the last thing I have is around parking. I, I grew up in a rural environment in Pennsylvania and, and have gone to a lot of these fairs and festivals and, and there's an opportunity in, in these harvest festivals to park, you know, on, and I think on Livingston, on some of that state land along Livingston. I don't know if we've even looked at, at that, using some of those fields because it's September, all the harvesting will be done in, in those fields, right along everywhere from, you know, the, the fields, Funway Park up and, you know, up to East Street, over on the right and even on the left in those cornfields and those wheat fields. An opportunity to park right there in those fields. I don't know if we've looked at that and, and explored that, but that, that would help with a lot of the parking. So if you want to look at that. I don't know if the, whoever the, the state is leasing that land to for farming would be open to that, but, you know, when I go to these fairs, that's where you park. You park at a, you know, you park at a grass field, you park at a cornfield, you know, that's been, been chopped down. So that was one of the biggest issues that we had and, and I think, you know, we had 3,000 to 4,000 last year. We'll probably have, if it's nice, the same weather we got, it's probably going to be five to six with the word amount.
Right. I mean, we would have to talk to Chief Riggs again to see if that, that land is available. And again, that's where volunteers will have to come in, 18-plus volunteers, because as we had the very first year for the holiday event, the parking at the field across from the library turned into a nightmare. You had to park everybody. You couldn't just like randomly let people park because then people parked in all different directions. So that's where a huge amount of volunteers will have to be so that we can have them for rows. It's a great idea because I do anticipate that we will get a large amount of people and we are trying to keep parking away from businesses so that people, you know, businesses, of course, that are open on Sunday. People that aren't, you know, open, I don't think they really care, but we want to avoid people going to the country club, going to where John Ryan's is. And so if we had overspill, that would be great. I will request, I will ask permission to see if we can use the wind school, but if we can do that, that would be great. Again, volunteers, please, you know, please step up. That would be great, you know, if, if anyone. You know, if, if anyone knows volunteers, if, if you guys want to volunteer, please, please step up. We, we can use all the help. So, and it's a fun event, you know, and, and people like to see our town officials walking around.
Yeah.
Look at the silence.
I would look into Bruce's idea too, because I think, you know, being able to park in one area and walk to a bus stop.
That's a great idea.
It just keeps traffic away from one central location.
That is definitely a great idea, and like I said, I, I will address that with Officer Welch because if we can do that, there's a lot of, you know, local residents on some of those side streets that would just walk up to Main Street. So, if we can do that, that would be great. Even on East Street, the route, well, we're not planning to do East Street, but Chandler, you know, there, there might be other locations that people want to. So, if we can have, have a good amount of bus stops, that would work out really well.
And if you can mark that we got a good idea from Selectman Penneley.
Didn't take that long. It's the first one, right?
Just, just to clear up the financial.
Kickback.
Kickback. It's a certain percentage.
It's a certain percentage.
That they give back to, to the town, really.
It's a gemation.
And it's how we continue to run, you know, the events, and that's why, and vendors pay a small fee to be there, but nonprofits don't pay anything to be there. So, if a nonprofit wants to have boot there for any reason, you know, they're free. So, that's, so that's where the money goes, just back into a fund where, you know, fireworks and whatnot.
Transparency is a, is a good trait.
Yeah.
Exactly. So, I thought you just clear that up.
Thank you.
Where the money goes. Goes back into the.
And we get to use. No, no, no. No community members dedicate.
No. No. It's all strictly volunteer. As a matter of fact, the All About Fun that has the rides, they also.
Donate.
Donate back. Donate back into the town so that we can use it for other events, not necessarily the Fall Harvest Festival because we have the other event as well. So, all the money is put back in so that the town can benefit by having these wonderful events.
Okay, great. Not, not to belabor that point, but is there a need for a Friends of group or something related to fundraising for a town committee?
If they're doing direct fundraising, but this is really.
If it's a donation, it's okay.
Yeah. It's not fundraising. They just.
Right.
Yeah. Just making sure.
A big circle of being able to continue to do that.
I use the, the phrase kickback is because that's a Dean's concession.
Don't use that term.
But it's not, not. It's not coming to us. It's back to the town to benefit whatever else we want to do for the town.
All right. Well, let me, let me thank the four of you and Selectman Gay. I know he's a, he is a member of the committee, I know that, so, for, for joining us. And I did succeed in, in getting your colleagues to interject some points here, so that was good. It was a true committee presentation. So, you know, on behalf of the board, certainly, you know, I know you put a lot of volunteer hours into this event and others and through the course of the year. It reflects on the commitment to the community and the spirit of the community. It's the lifeblood of what makes Tewksbury Tewksbury. So, someone has to be the tip of the spear and make those things happen. Others in our community can just show up and critique it, and it seems like you learned a lot from your experiences last year, and throughout your presentation, you salted in those comments. And obviously, I view that in a very positive light as, like many things that we've done, whether it be at this board or other things here in town, we certainly strive to get better each time we do something. So, it's about progress, not perfection, and it certainly came across in your presentation. So, I want to commend you for that and kind of doing some self-assessment about how things went last year and trying to improve how things will go. And hopefully, if things work all right, the results will be that much better than they were last year. So, good for you. Thank you for coming in and apprising us of that, and hopefully, some of the commentary that you got from us, other than the kickback piece, was constructive.
Stop saying it already.
That's right. It's a supportive message.